Go ahead and call the meeting in the order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is roll call.
Thank you, your honor. Are you present?
Present.
Okay. Councilmember Morford?
Here.
Councilmember Doug Sashow?
Here.
Councilmember John Kaper?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Garcia?
Yeah, here.
Councilmember Lauren Boyette?
Present.
Councilmember James Parks?
Here.
All right, next is public comment, audience participation. This is for items that are not on the agenda. If somebody wishes to speak, come on up, sign up, and you're limited to three minutes, please.
All right, good evening, everybody. All right, thank you for your time tonight. I want to go over an issue that I've had, and I have handouts for everybody here, for everyone on the council.
Who are you? I'm sorry.
My apologies, Jason Infante. So I live over on 503 Colfax Street, and I've been dealing with an issue from a project the city did back in 2024. So this was July of 2024. There was an upgrade where the street was redone, and there was an alley pan poured on the alley behind my house. So prior to this work being done, once I found out about it, I contacted the city, notified them that there is a potential to create drainage problems there. My house was the first one built in that subdivision. It's the lowest one, and I have a driveway off the back alley that drains obviously into the alley then. After several attempts, I finally got a call back. JW acknowledged that he was aware of this issue and that they'd address it when they poured it. Unfortunately, that was not the case. Afterwards, flooding issues with, there's two shops that I have there. I've got flooding issues during big storms where everything backs up into my shops, and that back alley, basically the alley just washes into my back driveway. Like I say, this was July of 2024. Finally, after seven unreturned phone calls to JW, I got ahold of Tom Aker. And I'm going to paraphrase a lot of this stuff. Please go through this packet. But basically, 19 calls with Tom. We had an action plan where something was supposed to get done. They're supposed to grade it down for now and find a long-term solution. The change in elevation across 70 foot is 3.6 inches for my alley to drain from my driveway to the street. Again, the alley drains in to me is part of this issue. Went through this last weekend, so, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Sent an email to Tom, did not get a response. Didn't get a response until I reached out about the annexation, which there's a sheet on here with some questions I have. We'll talk about that later. And didn't get a reply back, and when I brought it up in that email to Tom, he told me that it's being monitored and that it has confirmed that there's no more drainage issues. So last Saturday, I took garden hose out there and basically filled my back driveway with 350 gallons of water just to show it doesn't drain. So this backs up into my property. All this extra water sitting there can cause settling. You know, there's shops there, concrete floors in the shops. My back driveway's starting to crack. This was not there prior to this. I just, I want this addressed. I want some accountability. It's been 15 months, so that is my ask here to the council. Please review all this stuff, and please take action on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I get it. All right, thank you. Excuse me, anybody else? All right, next is recognition of school resource officer, FM middle school staff, and first responders. And it's with our deepest gratitude that we thank you for your heroic actions on 8/28, about 12:14 in the afternoon, a student in crisis at Fort Morgan Middle School and your swift assistance. Your swift and courageous response saved a life, and for that, there are truly no words that can fully express the appreciation felt by Jordan, his family, and our entire community. Your bravery and selflessness in the moment of urgent needs remind us of the very best in humanity. And because of you, a young life continues with hope and promise. Thank you for being there when it counted most. You are true heroes. Okay, I'm going to go through the names of the people that we have here that are responsible, and Councilmember Boyette has letters and certificates for you, so if you'd just come up and receive those. First, Francie Bragg, school nurse.
Hold on just a second, Kevin. Number one, I just got these, so you may get somebody else's. So if you know that person, I'm going to do my best to keep them in order, but they're not fully in order. And number two, we're recognizing this tonight because it was a national story. But more importantly, what I wanted to make sure got known is these things are happening every day. We have such a burden of responsibility on our school personnel and on first responders. All the things that we don't hear about every day are really what we're celebrating right now. We're celebrating through Jordan's positive outcome, but every single day, we ask all of you to be proxies for parents, grandparents, caretakers, and you do a fabulous job. So that's really why you're here tonight.
Okay, and of course, with my former profession and everything, I truly appreciate what everybody did and their rapid response, everything too. So, all right, so first Francie Bragg, school nurse. Next, Jonathan Renteria, SRO.
Your honor, he's not able to be here this evening.
Not here today, okay. Now we'll go to the teachers that assisted and came to the rescue. Lilbeth Soceda. Eric Christiansen. Ebony Percy, or Ivani Percy. Greg Gatto. Yeah, he's playing with state. Okay, Matthew Porter. Okay, Chad Unrain. Matt Stalker. And Nolan Meyer. Next are EMT responders, Adrian Villarreal. Keebree Walker. Ashley Packer. Daniel Beza. And Travis Freeman.
And mayor, would we want to give just a minute if Jordan or Jordan's family want to address? You've got all these folks here for you. Anything you want to say to anybody here tonight? Way to put you on the spot, Sad.
Sure.
Well, I wasn't expecting all this, but thank you, everybody who helped out. I mean, it wasn't possible without everybody there, all the quick response and all the training that you guys went through. It really showed that day, and we couldn't be more grateful. So thank you to everybody that was there, and thank you guys for holding this for them. They really do deserve it, so thank you.
And then I think that also, besides just personal courage, it kind of reflects what we all think about a small town and everything, as far as everybody willing to step up for your neighbor. So again, thank you. Okay, next is approval of the minutes of last meeting. Ms. Curtis.
Thank you, your honor. The meeting minutes of September 16th, 2025 are in your pocket as presented.
Okay, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? If not, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I'd like to make a resolution to accept the minutes as written for September 16th, 2025, City Council regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, so I have a resolution by James Parks, a second by Jeff Morford. Vote by roll call.
That resolution passes unanimously.
Somebody messed with my stuff.
Okay, next is a proclamation declaring October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence affects every person in Fort Morgan, Colorado either as a victim, survivor of domestic violence, or as a family member, significant other, friend, neighbor, or coworker. And whereas recognition of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month exemplifies the commitment to serving domestic violence survivors by acknowledging, invigorating, and rededicating ourselves to the goal of eliminating domestic violence. And whereas Share Incorporated is working to provide quality services and assistance to domestic violence survivors responding to emergency calls and criminal justice proceedings. And whereas domestic violence programs like Share Incorporated and other professionals and advocates of nonviolence have joined together to support each other in their work and to provide our citizens with safety and services. And whereas during the month of October, Share Incorporated will be intensifying efforts to promote public understanding of family violence and increase sensitivity to victims of family violence, emphasizing the need for citizen involvement in efforts to reduce family violence through education and changing public attitudes. Now therefore, I, Kevin Lindell, mayor of the city of Fort Morgan, Colorado, do hereby designate October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Fort Morgan and urge to the appropriate recognition thereof. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Fort Morgan to be affixed this 7th day of October 2025. Do you have anything you want to say?
Of course I do. For anybody that knows me, I just actually brought a couple numbers tonight. I'm not going to do a big old spiel like I did last year, but wanted to let you know since January 1st of this year, we've served 252 survivors of intimate partner violence, and we've spent $95,279.98 on direct client services. That doesn't include operations. That doesn't include salaries. This is directly to survivors of domestic violence to get them safe. Thank you all for having us, and thank you for the proclamation.
Next is recognition of business of the month, Ms. Schneider Engel.
Good evening. Sharing a new product with customers is a long-anticipated moment of satisfaction, especially if it's a food or a beverage product. There is the planning, there is the trial and error process, there is the perfecting, the branding, and the marketing elements. And then there are all the additional aspects of starting and operating a business that is part art and part science. For this month's Business of the Month honoree, there has been much insight, work, and passion that went into the 99-plus bottles of beer, or should I say mugs, on the wall that eventually are taken down and passed around. Tonight, it is my honor and privilege to announce that Cucaro Brewing has been selected as this month's Business of the Month recipient for its valuable contributions to our community. Each month, this distinction is given to a Fort Morgan business that excels in such areas as pride in their business, top-notch customer service, operational growth, active involvement in area organizations and programs, and community contributions that assist in a better quality of life. It has been a sweet journey for brewery owners Doug and Andrea LaRue. The couple met decades ago while working at the local sugar beet factory. However, after a long 40-plus-year career in the food processing business, it was time to follow a dream. Doug had been home brewing for years and even earned a brewing certificate. He felt that this was an opportunity to put his passion to work and create an experience for those in our area to enjoy. In fact, Cucaro Brewing is the only brewery in eastern Colorado that offers 20 taps with a mix of craft beers and nine in-house brews that include pilsners, stouts, citrapellels, and IPAs. Six of these are in honor of people who have inspired or helped the owners along the way and are known as brews from the other side. It is not just the brews that draw patrons to the establishment, but the gourmet wood-fired pizza oven imported from Italy also draws oozes and ahs. Andrea and Doug trained at a pizza school in Denver in order to master the Neapolitan-inspired pizza and have added additional creative menu options as well. They purchased the perfect eclectic and historic building on the corner of Railroad and Ensign and set forth renovating it on the weekends. They built tables, tore down walls, designed a special signature wall for future artwork, and shaped the previous retail space used as a bicycle livery into a welcoming and friendly establishment that fosters tourism as well as contributes to the local economy as a central gathering place. Data from the U.S. Brewers Association shows that breweries in Colorado have had an economic impact of more than $2 to $5 million in recent years and employ more than 17,000 people in the state. In fact, Cucaro Brewing locally employs 22 individuals. Part of the joy of craft production is the community it fosters, according to Craft Lab. Whether it is supporting local businesses or sharing industry knowledge, great things happen when thinking outside the bottle. Cucaro is a verb that means to hang out, relax, and be, or to relax into the flow of life. Incidentally, Andrea discovered the fitting but striking word "cucaro" in a book she was reading and shared it with Doug. The name is apropos with the owner's vision of the environment that they wanted to create. After years of obtaining licenses, working on a business plan, and renovating a building, they officially opened the doors on February 14th, 2025, Valentine's Day. Incidentally, their grand opening with the Chamber of Commerce Ruben Cutting Ceremony was held on June 21st, 2025, also known as LaRue's 35th wedding anniversary. They tapped six of their beers that day, including three of the brews from the other side, to mark the occasion. They also completed the patio space on the west side of the building, which gives people a nice outdoor setting to enjoy the weather, including those who might bring their furry friends with them on a walk and stop by to sip along the way. Birmosa brunch is offered twice a month on Sundays, which features a select breakfast-style menu from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Their community support and collaboration efforts of this young business has been remarkable. Donations have helped such local organizations as the Youth Cheerleader Fan Club, Ebenezer Lutheran Care Center, Encouraging Sisters Breast Cancer, sorry, fundraiser, the Woodland High School, the Morgan County Family Center, and Common Spirits United and Recover Event, to name a few. They are also establishing the Cucaro Brewing Morgan County High School Scholarship fundraising money through cribbage tournaments. And by the way, the second one is happened to be scheduled for October 12. And various other activities in order for a scholarship to become available at each area high school. Part of this business's magic is the willingness to collaborate with other local merchants and organizations to create engaging opportunities and support of the efforts of fellow entrepreneurs. Cucaro can be found participating in the downtown Fort Morgan Third Thursday Art Walk, serving as a stop for the Bicycle Adventures Corn Moon Bike Ride, and hosting an adult book fair akin to the Scholastic Book Fair with books on Main. Please join me in congratulating and thanking our October Business of the Month selection, Cucaro Brewing, for the outstanding efforts and contributions this business provides in order to make Fort Morgan a great place to live, work, and enjoy.
Wow, I didn't know you were going to say all that, Sandy. Sounds wonderful. Thank you. I think it's a year ago we were standing in front of you, or maybe just about two years ago, standing in front of you, asking to open the business and for approval, and so we're very grateful.
Yeah. On behalf of Andy and I and our staff over there, thanks for everything. Been great in support.
Thank you, guys.
We have an MCC function going on over there now, so we have to get back.
Okay, next on the agenda, presentation, possible action by an appointment of Lynn Deal to the Historic Preservation Board. Councilmember Boyette.
Your honor, fellow council members, we received an application for a membership on the Historic Preservation Board by Lynn Deal, who has been a member of that board in the past, and I'm here tonight to recommend that Lynn be accepted to continue serving on the board.
Does she have any qualifications?
You call her and ask her. You've got two hours.
All right, I'd take a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept Lynn Deal.
All right, now a second.
Okay, so I have a motion by James Parks, and a second by John Kaper. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that motion carries. Next is council acting as a liquor authority for a public hearing. This is a public hearing before the City Council of Fort Morgan, acting as the local licensing authority for the city, determine whether the application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license by the Rooster Agrofood LLC at 104 South Main Street should be granted or denied. This hearing will be conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado and the ordinances and procedures of the city of Fort Morgan. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information, data, and testimony by interested parties in order to enable the city to make findings and reach conclusions required to be made by state law as to whether or not the applicant application should be approved or denied. One of the principal questions the council will be concerned with throughout this hearing relates to the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood for the outlet applied for and the desires of the inhabitants of that neighborhood with respect to the license. Those persons who will be heard during this hearing are parties of interest who are defined by state laws being the applicant, residents of the neighborhood, and owners or managers of businesses located in the neighborhood. The council has previously set boundaries of the neighborhood for all liquor licenses in the entire city. Does anyone present object to the boundaries of the neighborhood? Are there any disclosures from council members? If not, we'll proceed with the public hearing. The order of this hearing will be as follows. At the conclusion of my opening statements, the city clerk will give a summary of all the preliminary investigations completed with regard to the application. The applicants will present their case, meaning they will present testimony, exhibits, petitions, or other materials relevant to the application. Interested parties may then testify for or against the proposed application, after which the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal. At the conclusion of all testimony, the council will make its decision to approve or deny the application. All testimony will be given under oath by the city clerk. Any exhibits presented during the hearing will be submitted to the city clerk to become part of the record. The city clerk's official files are hereby admitted into the hearing of this, the record of this hearing. First is the legal issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis has this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, your honor, on September 17th on our website under legal notices.
Next is presentation of the application by Ms. Curtis.
Thank you again. So this is for the Rooster Agrofood LLC, and the applicant is seeking a hotel and restaurant liquor license. Anna is here, and she submitted the application and all of the fees on August 4th. The application was reviewed by the city clerk, city attorney's office, and the Fort Morgan Police Department, and everything was complete. Back on August 19th, city council, acting as the local liquor licensing authority, formally accepted the application, and now we're here for the public hearing today. They did do their form of evidence for their needs and desires, and they showed a total of 60 signatures, which 19 had to be ruled invalid because the signers did not live in city limits. We do not require a minimum of signatures either. So we have not received any written or verbal comments for or against the issuance of the license as well. She has undergone a fingerprint background check, and that had no findings, and the preliminary inspection of the license premises will be completed upon the state license approval. So we are recommending that the local liquor licensing authority look at the evidence presented and make a decision on the application for the Rooster Agrofood LLC located at 104 South Main Street.
All right, next we'll hear comments from the applicant, if any. Does the applicant wish to address the council? Or does the council have any questions for the applicant? All right, next we'll hear public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
There were none.
Well, now to proceed to council discussion. Are there any questions from the council or any discussion from the council? If there's no further discussion by council, I entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
Motion to close. Second.
So I have a motion to close with Jeff Morford, and a second by Bill Garcia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, next we'll go to council action. Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, mayor and council. You've heard presentation of this matter. Proper action is by a resolution on the application for a new hotel and restaurant license.
All right, so I will entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I'd offer a resolution to approve the application for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license for the Rooster Agrofood LLC at 104 South Main Street.
Second.
Okay, so I have a resolution by Lauren Boyette, a second by James Parks. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All righty. Next is presentation, possible action on purchase of a solar be for the water treatment plant. Mr. O'Conne.
Good evening, council, honorable mayor. Thank you for allowing me this time to come before you. Staff is requesting purchase of a solar be. Staff is requesting purchase of a solar be. I gave you a lengthy council memo describing our history with previously having one. Main purpose of this solar be is to help combat algae problems with our reservoir. Currently, we use copper sulfate to combat that. If we don't, algae is going to create taste and odor problems, and we've had those complaints in the past. 2013 was a prime example of that. We had algae outbreak and had taste and odor complaints from citizens, city of Fort Morgan. We feel with all the tools that we have, algae counts, algae counters, we also have a PAC system that will actually absorb taste and odor compounds, 67%, one more tool to our arsenal would help, and that's a solar be. With the future coming upon us, we are looking at a second reservoir. We've learned that longer detention times in the reservoir contributes to algae increases, or algae blooms, I should say. We are looking at a second reservoir, so in the future, we're also going to be deemed to stir that reservoir water more frequent. Solar be is going to help us do that, help us keep those algae counts down and keep taste odors hopefully at a minimum, and reduce the use of PAC and additional chemicals around the plant. We did budgeted, we did budget for a solar be for this year, $63,000. When we looked at, looking out for a solar be, the price was $65,422, or $65,422. Ixum is the only company that provides a solar be, so we weren't able to go out for bid. They are a sole-source company, and I did include that sole-source letter with your council memo. If approved, we are over budget by $2,422. We are looking to pull that from account maintenance and plant equipment if approved. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to answer those.
So any questions?
Yes, and the sole purpose for that is just to reduce the algae for the taste, or algae is another problem?
Yeah, so algae is a common problem in reservoirs.
Yeah.
Sunlight, warm weather, they're going to thrive. You get a food source, they're going to really take off. What a solar be does is going to mix bottom layers up with the top layer, give you a continuous mixing. If you don't, you get warm water on top, and that's where you get your taste and odor, taste and odor, algae, they start to produce, and they start to thrive. If you can continuously mix cold water and warm water together, more of your healthy algae is going to take over, and then you'll have less taste and odor complaints.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
So with the purchase of this, I'm assuming you won't have to buy as much as copper sulfate, and that will go down in your budget?
Yes, we're trying to get away from copper sulfate, period.
Is that an expensive item to purchase with that chemical, or?
We're looking.
I don't know, I'm just curious.
Ten to $12,000 a year for copper sulfate. So we're buying like two pallets of it.
All right.
So, and also too, when you add copper sulfate, you don't actually eliminate, you eliminate what's thriving. Once you take that out, there's another one coming up behind it. So you're just constantly monitoring and adding. It's a never-ending cycle. From 2007 to 2014, when we had a solar be, we weren't adding copper.
You know, I appreciate the information you provided in the first one I read. Just if it was on the taste and odor, I thought, I wanted to hear more, but when I read that we were treating with copper sulfate, when Sue and I owned a nursery, we did a lot of pond installations of various sizes, and I could not read through all of the warnings on copper sulfate. So there is a tremendous amount of echo damage that can be done with that to all kinds of living organisms within the water, things that feed on those things. And I always tried to turn people away from that and to move that water more, rather than try to treat with copper. So, yeah, I would totally move away from that if we can.
Any other comments or questions? All right, in that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
I'll offer a resolution to purchase a solar be for $65,422, as presented.
Second.
We did the second.
Jim.
Okay. So I got a resolution by James Parks, I mean, by Jeff Morford, second by Jim Parks. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Al.
Next is presentation, possible action on reimbursement of expenses associated with the construction of North State Street. Mr. Nation.
Yes, good evening, everyone. As I outlined in my memo, this is the, this is the section of North State that is behind the Maverick Gas Station and Arby's that's associated with the construction of the housing project that Cargill has been doing. As I indicated, years ago, we looked at a design for a cul-de-sac and an extension of that street when the city was looking at having, I think it was a Holiday and Express built on the old skate park. And so we moved forward with plans. When the hotel kind of went away, we shelved those plans. We brought those plans back out and was going to actually build that extension to help make that park property look more developable and everything. And so we, we've had money in the capital budget for this project before. Back when it was in the capital project, we were anticipating needing $400,000 to complete the work down there. When the Cargill developer approached us and wanted to build that project on such an aggressive timeframe, it put us in a situation where we didn't have money in the budget. We had already approved the budget. And so during the conversations with the developer, we basically indicated, we'll work with you to try to help you reimburse the portion of the road that's the city's responsibility, but you guys are moving so quickly that you're going to basically do the work, and then we'll just have to deal with you at the end of it. And so, so they're basically now at the end of it. The developer has paid their contractor for the improvements that were done there. I sat down with them and went through their bills and everything. I gave you a breakdown of what they indicated went into the road improvements over there. I did ask them to exclude the sanitary sewer improvements. Those were all something needed just for the housing project and didn't have anything to do with anybody else over there. So, so we excluded those, and then we're basically splitting all the other costs associated with that. And so, so when it comes down to it, the city's paying, or they're asking us to reimburse them for a little over $166,000 for our portion of the street that has been improved over there. And so, having reviewed all the costs and everything associated with it, it seems like everything is, was done correctly and everything. We've gone through and checked everything that was built over there, and it passes our inspections. So at this point, I'm looking for a resolution just so we can reimburse Riverside Homes for half of the work that was done on North State Street. So be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, resolution reimbursing Riverside LLC for amount of $166,147.21, as presented.
Second.
All right, so I got a resolution by Doug Sashow, second by Bill Garcia. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you for that.
And next is presentation, possible action on a resolution to approve an incentive and development agreement with the Barry E. Walter Senior Company. Mr. Nation.
Okay, this is one of our development agreements that we do, where we've, we've met in executive session, and you guys gave me parameters to deal with the developer on. And so what you have in front of you tonight is a resolution that basically allows the mayor to sign that development agreement. This is a request by the Barry Walter Senior Company out in our industrial park. He is in the midst of wanting to do a 15,000-square-foot expansion, as was explained in executive session. And he has made a request for some incentives to go along with the expansion work. Can't say enough for that company being one of our, you know, original anchor tenants of the industrial park out there. It's been 30 years, I think, is what we've met, 31 years now that they've been a business here in Fort Morgan, and they continue to grow. And so it was, I think, one of those decisions was pretty easy. We don't get a lot of existing businesses that come to us with requests for incentives with their growth and everything. And so I think this is one of those that's always shows good faith on us that, you know, we appreciate the businesses that we have, and we're willing to help them out a little bit, especially when they're wanting to continue to show growth in our community and add to our tax base and add to their employee numbers, which helps everything. The document that you had in your packet had a couple of highlighted sections in there, just requests for things out of recorded documents. Those have all been now updated, included in the final agreement to be signed. They're not substantial to the intent of the agreement. So Barry Walter Jr. is here, if you've got any questions for him. But what you have in front of you tonight is in line with what we discussed in executive session, and so I would ask for approval of the resolution that's in your packet.
All right, so does anybody have any questions? Either Brent or Barry, Jr.? All right, hearing none, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution to approve an incentive and development agreement with the Barry E. Walters Senior Company. Second.
Okay, so I have a resolution by James Parks, second by Jeff Morford. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Barry.
Thanks, Barry.
Thanks, Barry, appreciate it, bud. All right, next is presentation, possible action on the first reading of an ordinance to adopt the 2026 budget, set the mill levy and appropriate monies to the various funds within the city of Fort Morgan, and request to schedule a public hearing for October 21st. Ms. Edson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's been a long process trying to get to this point, as we went through every department, line by line, going through the budget, but we finally got it all finished. So the first reading here, the first section is we'll set the mill levy to 13.254 mills upon dollars assessed values. Those are properties within the city of Fort Morgan. That is no change from what we've had prior. And then next, we will use all of those funds, along with other taxes and fees and charges, and appropriate the funds. So in the general fund, we have $18,808,563. Capital Improvement Fund, $9,601,635. The Electric Fund, $31,288,777. Water Fund, $13,135,513. The Gas Fund is $6,316,373. Sewer Fund, $17,127,257. Sanitation Fund, $1,848,568. Perpetual Care, $258,000. And Self Insurance and Risk Management, $6,691,105. And that comes to a grand total of $105,077,91. So do you guys have questions on any of that, or what questions do you have?
Just starting on that page, what about the deficit there of 10 million is?
Yep, so basically, there's a few things, a handful of things that make that up. The large chunk is your electric fund, deficit of $6.7 million. We're doing a large.
Substation.
Substation rebuild. And so we've been kind of collecting reserves on that and saving up money to rebuild that substation. It's not something that happens every year. We only do it, I'm not sure how often even, but not, not often, so we've been.
How long?
This is the first time like this substation's been upgraded since it was constructed.
So, so that's, that's the large portion of it in electric. And then the sewer fund also has a lot as a $1.4 million deficit as we're gearing up for the wastewater treatment plant project, and then a large stormwater sewer project.
Those deficits are balanced out of reserves.
Yeah, and there are, there are reserves to cover all of those.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Okay, any other questions?
That was my exact question, what you had, so thank you.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'd entertain a resolution.
You're all make a resolution to approve the, sorry, first reading of the ordinance to adopt the budget, set, correct? You want to set the mill levy and appropriate monies to various funds within the city of Fort Morgan, request to schedule a public hearing for October 21st.
Second.
So I'd have a resolution by John Capers, second by James Parks. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right. And since you're up here, why don't we go ahead and discuss presentation, possible action to adopt the 2026 schedule of fees.
Right. Good evening again. I think it was the last city council meeting where we discussed all the changes that were made for the schedule of fees. I'll just highlight, we had changes in recreation and golf, wastewater lab fees, and then a few building department fees, mostly just to cover increased costs.
Okay, are there any questions? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution to adopt the 2026 schedule of fees. Second.
So I have a resolution by James Parks, second by Jeff Morford. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
Next is presentation, possible action on first reading of an ordinance annexing the Enclave A and request to schedule a public hearing for November 18th. Mr. Acker.
This is the second of the three enclave annexations. Earlier this year, I was before you with Enclave C. This is Enclave A, and it's number one, number two, and A, number three. To refresh your memory, enclave annexations happen when cities surround unincorporated areas for over three years, and if council has determined it's in the best entrance of the city to annex the unincorporated area. Enclave A, number one, number two, and number three is approximately 23.89, 089 acre. It's 41, about 41 properties, and it's currently a mix of uses. It's along West Street between the railroad tracks and approximately Cherokee Street. In that area, we've got residential, we've got some somewhat ag land area, we've got some businesses, we've got a church, and we've got more residential down south. In fact, that's all primarily all residential. We sent a letter out on the 18th of July expressing our intent to annex, and also informed people that we would be taking this to the Planning Commission, and then it would come to city council for first and second readings. To date, we've had, and in my public, my council communication, I went into a lot of detail on the number of properties and who are the ownerships and things of that nature, and how things went at Planning Commission. They did recommend that we bring this forward to council for approval as well, or for consideration. We've had about, I've personally had about a half dozen contacts once the letter went out. We also have had code enforcement go out and visit people. Majority of the issues or concerns we've had brought up is, are we going to pave the streets? Are we going to put curb, gutter, and sidewalk? We've had a few people. People ask, are we going to make them pave their driveways? We've said no to that. We've got, I've been contacted by the owner of the land that's got some animals, and what would happen with these animals with annexation. And in discussions with the city manager, we've kind of taken the direction of, we're not going to make you get rid of your animals right away, but you'll have to keep them pinned and controlled, and then if they die, or if you harvest them, you don't add to it or replace. And that seemed to be okay to the individual that I talked with. Also, people have asked about, do they have to get city services? And we said not as a result of this annexation. If you would like to get services, you're welcome to. And in many cases, it might be less expensive, but that's your decision as an individual property owner. Um, we've also had questions about my water well and with, like with, uh, city services, as long as the well's operating and you're using it, we, you can continue to use it. And I pointed people to the city ordinance that was updated a couple of years ago to allow that to happen. And then, um, we've had some concerns as Mr. Alfante, um, brought up with drainage and if we do do curb and gutter, that's one thing we'll have to take a look at is the drainage and do a drainage study. Um, with that, I will answer any questions, but staff is recommending that this be considered for and scheduled for a public hearing in November.
Any questions or comments? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, for a resolution on first reading of the ordinance annexing the enclave A and requesting to schedule a public hearing for November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five as presented by Mr. Aker.
Second.
Who did the second? Okay. So, I got a resolution by Doug Soshaud, uh, second by Lauren Boyette, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right. Next is presentation, possible action on the first reading of ordinance zoning enclave A annexation and request to schedule a public hearing again for November eighteenth. Since you're there, why don't you go ahead and address this one for us?
I will, I will do that, sir. Um, after we annex a piece of property or an enclave, what is required next in the state statute is to zone that property. Um, that needs to be done with about ninety days and typically it's done concurrently with the annexation. Uh, staff has taken a look at what, uh, the properties are currently being utilized at and what the surrounding properties are. And for this area, we've, um, determined that it could be, that it should be a mix of, uh, of zoning, um, of both transitional and R-two. Annexation area number one is, uh, primarily R-two to the north of it. R-two makes sense for the south of it as well. Annexation area number two has the church, a resident, and a business sports related on it. So, we're recommending trans- transitional zoning for that area. And then annex, and also tr- transitional area for the, uh, annex area number three, which is north of Arapahoe. Uh, that seems to be a mix of residential, um, and some business properties as well and some vacant properties. So, we feel transitional would be best suited for that area. And then the southern part of annexation number three, which is south of Arapahoe, it is primarily residential and surrounded by R-two. So, we're recommending R-two for that area as well.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Tom?
Yeah, Tom, uh, the, on the transitional, could that say that way indefinitely or does it have?
Yes, it can.
Okay. Okay. That was my only question.
Anything else? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, for a resolution for the first reading of ordinance, of an ordinance annexing enclave B and request a public hearing for November eighteenth as presented.
Second.
Okay. So, got a resolution by Jeff Morford, second by Bill Garcia, vote by roll call.
Hold on just a second. That, you made a motion to annex. We're still doing the zoning?
Um, I said, okay, yeah. I meant zoning. Uh, make a resolution for the... Where's that?
Sixteen.
First, yeah. Oh, I just-
Yeah, six, item sixteen.
I was on seventeen, sorry. Uh, first reading of ordinance zoning enclave A annexation and a public hearing for November, November eighteenth. Thanks.
Okay, I still second.
Okay. And I still have a resolution by Jeff Morford, second by Bill Garcia, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right.
Thank you for the line ahead of myself.
Yeah. Next is presentation, possible action on first reading of an ordinance annexing the enclave B and request to sc- uh, public hearing for November eighteenth again.
Thank you. Um, like enclave A, enclave B has been, uh, talked about for several years by city council. It is, uh, the last of the enclave annexations that I've been, be, that I'm bringing forward this year to city council. It's the area that is, uh, just south of Burlington Avenue between Enzen and just past Dual Street. Um, and in this area, we've got about fourteen point two acres of property, uh, eighteen individual properties, and it's a mix of uses as well, primarily kind of business oriented, but some other areas that are, uh, hard to tell exactly what the businesses are or what the uses are from looking at the street. Um, I've had about, uh, two or three calls from that area. Um, one was about, there's private roads in that area, part of Brush Avenue, part of Meeker is, uh, private. And the individual was worried about, are we gonna turn those roads into thoroughfares? Right now, there, we've relayed to that individual that there's no plans to do that in the immediate future. Uh, it kind of depends on what Burlington Northern decides to do with Burlington Road, um, if we would be forced into making some type of thoroughfare to access other properties. He seemed okay with that, uh, resolution. We've had, uh, again, curb and gutter questions and they do understand that that's gonna be based on the budget that is approved by city council and that if that should happen, we'll be notifying folks. And again, uh, do I have to get on, uh, city services? That's probably the area with, that code enforcement had the most contact because of all the different, uh, pieces of trash and old cars and things like that in people's yards. But they're trying to work with them and let them know that they all need to come into compliance. And some of the area has started to clean up it already. Uh, I don't know if you noticed the property on Dual Street south of the railroad tracks. They added a nice wrought iron fence and have cleaned up that property tremendously in the, in the last few months. So, with that, I will answer any questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, for a resolution on first reading of ordinance annexing the enclave B and requesting to schedule a public hearing for November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five as presented by Mr. Aker.
Second.
Okay. So, I have a resolution by Doug Soshaud, second by Lauren Boyette, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Well, I guess while you're here, why don't we go ahead and talk about, uh, possible action on first reading of ordinance zoning the enclave B annexation.
Again, once we annex the piece property, you need to zone that piece property. In reviewing the properties surround in the annexation, uh, B number one and B number two, it, uh, really fits well with the B-two zoning. That's what is surrounding it. And so our recommendation is that we zone, uh, this enclave B-two.
All right. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I guess we'll do it as the last one here. Presentation, possible ask result, uh, offer a resolution on first reading of the ordinance zoning the enclave B annexation and request to schedule a public hearing for number eight, uh, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five as presented by Mr. Aker.
Second.
All right. So, I have a resolution by Doug Soshaud, uh, second by Jeff Morford, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Now you can sit down.
Thank you.
All right. Next, biddings, bids, meetings, and announcements. Ms. Curtis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, we only have one bid out right now. It's the twenty twenty-five request for qualifications and proposals for the annual independent CPA audit of financials, which is due October tenth at four P.M. And then our next set of meetings, one is tomorrow at the Fort Morgan Airport for the Airport Advisory Board at noon, October eighth. That's tomorrow. October ninth, this Thursday, is the Historic Preservation Board meeting at four P.M. On Monday, October thirteenth, we have the Planning Commission meeting here at City Hall at four thirty. And on October sixteenth, we have the Golf Course Advisory Board meeting at Coyle Dunes Clubhouse at four thirty P.M.
All right. Uh, next, reports by officials and staff. Mr. Nation?
Yeah, the, the one thing I was just gonna hit on tonight, I know I've gotten a, a couple of phone calls, um, from a couple of you on council and, and we've been discussing it just in the office. Um, there's, there was a news story that came out about the NIS project and the fact that, uh, one of the participants has, um, announced that they are seeking not to belong, uh, to the, the coalition that's there. Um, this was something that I was aware of at our last participant meeting and everything. Uh, that community is the smallest participant in the, in the mix. Uh, they're pretty, pretty minor. Uh, right now, there's discussions going on about who may be looking at picking up some of that participation. And so, it's one of those things that I just wanted you guys to be aware that, um, as staff, when we attend these meetings, we're finding out about these things. Uh, I also, one of the comments that came out on Facebook that I just wanted to address is that, uh, there was a comment made that, you know, this, the, this project is spiraling out of control on costs. And, um, the individual made it sound like nobody was aware that all of a sudden this was a two billion dollar project. And I think the last time we had an update in here, we talked about the fact that this was a two billion dollar project. And the reason that our water enterprise, as you, um, approved on first reading tonight, is our water enterprise is now a thirteen million dollar enterprise annually. And so, we've been making strides in working towards being ready for the NIS project when the bill finally comes due. And so, we continue to work that way. That's, uh, what we as staff have been directed to do and that's what we continue to do. And so, I want you guys to know that, you know, s- some of the comments to us is, you know, unfounded. These are things that we're very well aware of and we've tried to make council very well aware of them as we continue to get updates from Northern and as, as this moves forward. Um, I think there's going to be some movement with some of the participants in the project, um, but we know that there's other communities that want to become involved in the project because the water is so desperately needed in the front range. And so, so as those things play out, we'll continue to update council and we'll make council aware of those things. But I just wanted to hit on that tonight and let you all know and, and just to highlight some of those things about NIS. So, okay?
Yeah, some of those comments I'd heard too, and my comment to them was, there's still too many moving parts to have the public debate here in front of everybody.
Yeah.
We don't have all the facts. We have no idea where it's going right now. We're just watching it closely and-
Yeah, this has been a-
Not following, following blindly.
Twenty-year process, so.
Yeah. Okay. Chief Sharp?
Thank you, Your Honor. You probably remember about a year or so ago, we had a, a gentleman stand here in front of you talking about a company that did some traffic surveys at no cost to us. And then they would, um, if the city council chose to go with that company, they would, um, send an e- a bill to somebody who violated a speed law, for example, and there'd be a, a ticket issued through the mail. Um, council at that time directed me to, to try to look at different avenues for speed. We started that process and then that company folded in, in the western part of the United States and is no longer here. So, we never finished that. Um, as that conversation went, we were contacted by another company called Obvio that does something very similar. Um, I did reach out with them and they, they have already started a little bit of this process to try to get us some data. But that company is a little different in that it will not only do speed, but using their cameras, it can determine whether cars are running stop signs. It can, um, see when pedestrians are crossing a street and the cars are, are not yielding to pedestrians. It can do different things. Um, and then it can send us that data. So, they are looking at some speed data, some different areas. Like, we set them up with a few. They didn't want to do too many, but we did a few, including the high-traffic areas where we have most problems, like the high school and the middle school area, where we not only have speed problems, but lots of problems with crosswalks and pedestrians and stop signs in those areas where that four-way stops are. Uh, so they're gonna get us some of that data as well as, um, they gave me one example of East River View near, um, the Optimist Park out there. We have a lot of speed that goes there towards Walmart. So, to give you an example, they set this out, I believe, on Friday afternoon. Um, East River View Avenue, westbound traffic at Vicki Street, we had nine thousand two hundred and eighty-one vehicles travel through there. About a hundred and seventy-six of those were high-risk violations, but I don't know what that means. He gave me this data at four fifteen today. I sent him back saying, what's high-risk data? I haven't gotten a response. So, I don't have that data, but that's an example of some of this data. If the, if we actually were to look, move forward with the company, what they do is they ta- it takes video, not only the license plate of the vehicle so that identifies them, but it takes a video, sends it to us. We would have to review that video to ensure that there was, um, a violation or that it's not, you know, a marked police car driving with lights and siren through an intersection or something of that nature. And then, um, that, that would take our staff to do that. And then they would send the summons out. And then, the way it works is they would take a thousand dollars per month per camera and that would be their cost. Anything the city had above that, which they would only, they would make that determination, would go to them, I mean, would go to the city as something. If, if we only brought in four hundred dollars in revenue, then they would not be charging anything more than what they got. So, there would be no cost to the city still. If we brought in ten thousand dollars in revenue, they would expect their thousand dollars plus whatever, ten dollars for summons or whatever that is. So, I did get, we are getting that data. I will report that back to you guys to determine what you want to do with it, if you want to do anything. Um, and we did look at some of the school zones, but the areas that are most impacted by speed or stop sign issues. There's a few places that we just don't have that many problems or there, for example, Baker School, our problems are not typically speed. We do write tickets over there. It's not typically speed. We have more double parking and other issues because of it being in a residential area that we address. So, um, we focused on the, the high-volume things. Of course, they will do the data. If they don't see that it's beneficial to them, they would not be proposing that they would be doing this because they wouldn't be making any revenue either. So, just wanted to report that and I'll give you the data when we get that back in the next few days, probably.
If it's okay with everybody, yeah, send us the data and information about the company and everything and then let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting and we can discuss it then, if that's okay with everybody.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Wilson, you have anything?
I would, I would like to add one thing, now that I remember. Uh, just remember, this Saturday at nine o'clock, we're doing our five K-ish. So, hopefully everybody can come out. It's just gonna be a run, walk, stand there. It doesn't matter. The idea is bringing the community together to, to get the police and the community together. So, if people just want to come hang out there until we start and then wait till the end, that's fine too. We'd like to see people out there. It's gonna start at three hundred Dual Street, the old middle school, Harvest University. So, we'll be starting there and then just going through town. At nine o'clock, yes.
And I became a grandfather this weekend.
Well, hey, congratulations.
That's low. Thanks. Anything from anybody in the back? Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, this meeting's adjourned.